Yeah, it's not the engineering stuff at all. What it is is uh. At the public works.
Well, I'm sure this is kind of gonna be kinda.
Though, yeah, they're part of it.
I pushed, I pushed it in.
Of like what inflatables?
Put me on the agenda, which was supposed to be right there.
Before we get started.
Habitat for Humanity.
On the rally.
Um, it's next, it's next, I believe it's the next meeting.
Oh, it's supposed to be this one because this is the uh.
I did not get any requests. I know we have a, we have a proclamation, but the proclamation was.
Like for computer without a wireless one?
It should have been mics, right?
Who told you that?
Or it might have been mics.
Oh, well, she told you wrong because we don't have anything. Yeah, we don't have anything.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. Yeah, for computers.
Um, you'll have to talk to the, to the mayor about that.
What do you have, sir?
Well.
You guys in domestic violence?
The Habitat.
Yep, we, we, we were supposed to do that before too, weren't we? We did this before.
No.
We did, we did, we did World Habitat, I could swear we did. Well, we'll include it.
For me?
We'll include it then.
Okay, alright.
Yep.
Yeah, she told me tonight, so.
Huh, I could have swore we uh. Thank you.
You share several potential.
Yep.
Sharing, sharing several potential park layouts.
We are back in regular session uh at this point in time. Please stand or move cover and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number five is informational reports. Included in the agenda is Proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Uh, this is for October. I'll read this. Whereas domestic violence is a serious and pervasive crime affecting millions of women and men, children and communities in the United States every year. Whereas abuse of a family member can have a long-term damaging impact on survivors and their children and impacts family, friends and their community at large. Whereas families are indispensable in a stable society and should be a place of support to install, instill responsibility and values in the next generation. Whereas violence against women and children is a prevalent social ill due to the historical imbalance of power and gender and age. Whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people but crossed all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers and is sustained by societal indifference. Whereas survivors of domestic violence should have help to find the compassion, comfort and healing they need and domestic abusers should be held fully accountable for their crimes against persons in the community. And whereas our community has a civic and moral obligation to work to prevent domestic violence, to address its brutal and destructive effects, and to make ending domestic violence a community priority. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work being done by our community and Crisis Intervention Shelter Service to prevent domestic violence, support survivors of domestic violence and hold perpetrators of such violence accountable for their crimes against the community, I, Mark Carstensen, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-one as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I have another one that was just handed to my, by Mr. Jolly. This is something we've done over the years and I apologize that we didn't get this one included, but uh. World Habitat, Habitat Day for twenty twenty-one. Uh, World Habitat Day was established to reflect on the state of our towns and cities on the basic right to all to have the adequate shelter. It is also intended to remind the world that we all have the power and the responsibility to shape the future of our communities. World Habitat Day takes place each year on the first Monday of October. Everyday Habitat for Humanity joins our partners around the world to rededicate ourselves to recognizing the basic right of everyone to, basic right of everyone to adequate shelter. We ask everyone to join together in communicating the message that a decent, affordable place to live could remove barriers to opportunity, health and success that may have been a part of a family's life for generations. We must establish smart policies now and that advance access to adequate, affordable housing for all to make a difference in our lifetime. A recent study indicates that thirty-eight thousand two hundred ninety-nine individuals in the Black Hills area need affordable housing. Habitat is working to meet the challenge to help some of the twenty-four percent of Black Hills residents who are cost burdened by housing, paying up to fifty percent of their income on housing costs. Habitat homeowners who came into a program looking to decrease their housing costs include teachers, police officers, nurses, retail workers, construction workers, waitresses, ministers and veterans. With a sharp increase in housing costs coupled with the lack of affordable housing stock, the need is only growing for families who need a hand up to achieve housing stability. In the Black Hills, Habitat homeowners contribute over one million dollars in property taxes every five years. They're active civic members and successful graduates from high school and higher education. We encourage the city of Sturgis to increase their focus on affordable housing with the Habitat to reach our long-term affordable housing goals together. This has been especially difficult year for many people in our community, yet Habitat has continued to pursue our goal of partnering with the families to own safe, affordable housing. Our goal is to serve twenty-five families in the next year and a hundred and fifty families in the Black Hills area over the next five years. We look forward to strengthening our relationship with the city of Sturgis and thank you for the belief that everyone deserves a decent place to live, so. Appreciate that. Appreciate you guys coming. Um, over the years, we've had a good partnership and we continue to work hard and try to find solutions, so. Thanks you guys.
Thank you very much.
Other things in informational reports, or excuse me, that's uh, all this including informational reports. Item six is announcements and praise. I'd like to take a moment and pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you. Uh, we, we pray to be humble. We pray to submit our plans to you and do the best that we can for this community. We pray that the greatest commandment would overcome, that love and pray for those that we disagree with. Um, we pray that our world becomes stronger as we, we fall in line with what you teach us. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Announcements and praise included in the packet is Fall Cleanup Week. Lot of extra work for Public Works. Um, seen people out scavenging, so. The old saying, one man's trash is another man's treasure is certainly, treasure is certainly true within the city of Sturgis. You, you may need a trailer out there with how much stuff some places, but I guess the main thing is, is you're on your, on the public credit way during your trash pickup day is the best thing to make sure. How about get it out as soon as possible? Pass the word to get it out as soon as possible. Um, other things included on the announcements and praise is the Lakeside Adventure Park meetings. Uh, those are scheduled for next Monday, which is a holiday and City Hall will be closed during Monday next week for Native American Day. And then Tuesday, also there's a meeting in the community center. Those are both in the gym. It's my understanding that it's research and gathering information from the community of what is desired and what people envision for a lakeside adventure park. Um, including of what activities to what floating devices are in the lake and things like that, but it's, it's seeking public input from the people that are trying to put this plan together and see truly what the cost would be with the, with the input that's been given to this point. And I think that's at, what time is that, Daniel? Starting the gym is at six or five thirty? It's next Monday and Tuesday. On Facebook? I don't think it's that long.
It's on your calendar? Nine AM to six, to three PM?
Nine AM to three PM on the.
I don't think that's correct.
There are.
Yeah, I think that's the only time, isn't there?
I think there's different.
Who's, who's going to be the facilitator?
Yep, the designer. Anybody else have anything to add to announcements and praises? Daniel gathers that information.
You got a LaZelle Street Corridor Study?
Yep, DOT. Go ahead.
Nine o'clock on October nineteenth is the LaZelle Street Corridor Study. I'm not sure where that meeting is actually held though.
At the Erskine Building.
Yeah, I think it's in the. That's where I remember seeing it.
Says Sturgis Community Center Theater.
Okay.
On the uh.
I, I read a hard copy letter that.
Well, that's, that's what's on the city webpage right now and.
The Lake Meetings on October eleventh um from one to seven is the general public session on October eleventh from one to seven PM. And then on October twelfth uh from one to five, there's also a public session as well. But the one to provide input is October eleventh from one to seven. It's not for six hours. It's just time.
Over that time.
Come in. And so if they can come in in the afternoon or if they can come in at six, that works. Yeah, the following day is the one that's at the Erskine Building. But the public one is at the community center.
So what, what's that corridor study? What is that exactly?
The DOT noticing the increased amount of traffic along LaZelle has hired a design firm to come up with design options for um the future of LaZelle um all the way from uh Highway one or Highway seventy-nine all the way to the um end of the city limits uh to make improvements at several intersections as well as um a lot of the existing conditions. And so they're seeking a lot of input. It's not that um any project will be done in the next year or two. It's to really, yeah, it's decades long and so it's um coming up with what are the most pressing needs and when or what the design should be to meet those needs.
Alright, thank you.
Could you give those dates and locations again? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, for which ones? For the?
The corridor, was one the eleventh and?
So the, the eleventh is for the Sturgis Lakeside Adventure Park and that's at the Community Center Gym. And the uh public sessions are one to seven PM. And so that's uh Monday, October eleventh at the Community Center Gym. And on the twelfth, it's uh from.
One to five.
One to five. Um, there's public comment as well and both of those days will be at the Community Center Gym. The LaZelle Corridor Study.
It's the nineteenth. Theater.
In the theater, starting at five.
Very fun.
Yeah, so at from five thirty to seven thirty.
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth. Five thirty to seven thirty.
Yep.
At the Community Center Theater.
What do you have, Deb?
I saw a poster for the Rally Summit, but I've seen nothing on the city website about it.
Rally Summit is from eight thirty to one on the fourteenth, Thursday the fourteenth. Thursday the fourteenth, so two Thursdays from now, from eight thirty to one. At the community center, at the theater. Tourism. Black Hills Badlands and Lakes, City. Lance. Any other announcements and praise? Item seven is city managers reports. I'll turn it back over to you, Daniel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, there are several changes in the payroll. Um, most of these um in the police department are volunteers um that will be assisting with our animal shelter. Uh, they are foster families for some of the animals um that are animal shelter uh reviews. Also, we have a volunteer at the library. Um, Jeannie Shine is going to be um coming back at the library um assisting them. At the community center, we have a new front desk attendant and the police department, we have Beth Bishon that will be joining us as a patrol officer. In addition, we do have our six-month ordinance review schedule and that's included in the packet. Um, we just want to make sure that everyone is aware over the next six months, some of the ordinances that the city council anticipates um reviewing. Uh, the state law requires two readings for an ordinance to be amended. Um, the city, in order to allow additional input from residents, has opted to increase that to essentially three um council meetings. And so there'll be one council meeting where there's discussion held and then a follow-up council meeting where a first reading will be held, which would include a vote on the proposed changes. And then a third council meeting where a second vote would occur. Um, if it passes a second vote, then it would be published and then after it's published, it would um become um effective twenty days after publication. There have been a lot of items um that have been brought up and the um the order that we're anticipating uh looking at is a use on review process as well as some of the zoning change process um as well as residential camping. Um, and then also outdoor amplified sound and other noise concerns. Um, that will have the first council discussion at your next council meeting on the eighteenth and then hopefully a first and second reading in November. So the first council meeting in November would hopefully be a first reading and the second council meeting would be the second reading. Um, again, and so to make sure the public is well aware, there would be a discussion held at your next council meeting on those topics. Um, and then in December, uh, we would start moving on to streets, sidewalks and public rights of ways as well as uh some additional zoning issues regarding food trucks. And then a couple other um administrative issues in our traffic um ordinance um that the police department have brought forward to hopefully streamline that process. And then early next year, on January fourth, we would hope to um have discussion regarding the contractor licensing um and the building permit process as well as costs. And then also um a consideration or discussion about whether or not we should look at adopting a property maintenance code. That is something that has been brought up several times over the past, I think, four or five years or more. And so that list is included in the packet and if anyone has any questions, they can definitely call City Hall and we can uh provide them that list as well as the list is in the packet. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Daniel.
Thank you.
Item eight is consent calendar. We only have A through C tonight. Have some minutes. A uh contract and a resolution versus surplus property. Does council wish to remove A, B or C and discuss them individually?
I have some questions on both A and B.
Okay. Is there any other? Does anybody wish to remove C? Is there a motion Angela to remove A and B and approve C? We have a first by Angela to approve C.
Second.
There's a second by Dave. All those in favor, please indicate by stating yes. Opposed to no. Thanks, Aaron. That motion carries unanimously. So subset A is minutes. Angela, what's your questions on that?
If you can hear me. Um, just a question at the end of okay, ordinance twenty twenty-one oh six. I didn't see any voting information at the end of that. And then it seemed like the voting information on all the other ones was kind of off.
Taking bad notes.
So I think at the end of twenty twenty-one oh six, it said.
Right here, motion by Anderson Wilkerson abstaining to approve second reading of the medical cannabis.
Okay, looking at it on the website, it ends.
Right on the page of.
Okay, was it? Cause it looked like right after it ended, it, it said that it was the budget one, twenty twenty-one oh eight off the website.
The, the, the packet was kind of goofy because of the fact, yeah, I mean, my second page came, I happened to hit that first before I hit my first page of minutes, so that might be what he ran into too.
I looked through it a whole bunch of times and I'm like, these seem really off. Okay, um, and then cause they all seemed like at the end of them, it wasn't.
I'm not sure. I didn't do anything different, you know, just scanned it in, so I'm not sure. Why, you know, why it would have messed it up.
Cause then the other. Is the end of that one?
Sorry. This would be the ordinance, the supplemental ordinance.
Yeah, so is that twenty twenty-one oh eight then? It could have.
Yeah, ordinance, yeah, twenty-one.
Oh, eight, okay.
So I think they just got out of order because mine's that way too.
Is it, okay.
Yep.
Is it? Does it look out of? Okay, see here, this is the end of the cannabis right here and it says all members.
Here, that's approving this ordinance. Yeah, this is the end.
It looks the effective right here.
Right, yeah.
And that's the next one.
Okay, I thought the voting was, okay, that's why then they were all off to me and I'm like, we're missing.
No, that, that is for the next one, yeah.
Hey, thank you.
That, that was confusing. I found it confusing.
Any other discussion on the minutes? Thanks, Fay. Is there a motion for subset A? There was first by Becca to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Angela. All those in favor of the minutes, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no? Please note unanimous for the minutes. Subset B. Contract with the sheriff. Go ahead, Angela.
Okay. It was late when I was going through all this, so who knows? Um, let's see. Uh, so I guess my first question was on the date of that contract. They all, it said, starting January of twenty twenty-one.
So this was a, the result of a lengthy negotiation with the county. Um, the city had intended to cancel the contract um at the end of last year and we had discussed that with the county. The county asked the city to reconsider. We extended it for, at that point, I think thirty days, maybe it was two months. Um, and so that was an amendment that was made and by the time that amendment went through, it, it went through the entire first quarter of twenty twenty-one. And so that's why this contract begins as of, what would that be, April one?
Yep.
Of twenty twenty-one. Um, and then the county asked for it to extend through the end of twenty twenty-two. And so it's for a period of a year and three quarters of, of a year. And so that's kind of why the dates are odd. Um, during the lengthy discussion, the city has continued to provide the services to the county, um which are um in essence, they're uh the nursing uh services that used to be provided by a county nurse at the jail. And now our ambulance staff does that, which we've been doing for, I don't know, four years, um, four or five years, something like that. In addition, we will transport inmates uh when necessary from the jail uh to the hospital and then back to the jail. And so um during this uh negotiation, there's negotiation about the price as well as what some of the protocols would be. Um, just various different things, so it continually was changed until we finally got to the point that it was approved by the county, I think, last month. Um, yeah, last month. And now it was being presented to the, the council. So that's why the dates are odd is because this has just been a a lengthy process.
Okay, thank you. And then, so was this, was it all just written? This is a new? Or this is a contract that's kind of been in effect, so it was written, like the wording has been there for.
The, the wording is very similar to what it, the twenty twenty agreement um was. There have been changes though compared to the twenty twenty. And again, that came about from negotiations with changes that our ambulance director wanted, changes that the sheriff wanted and then changes that another county official wanted. I'm sorry, I don't remember which one, but there, there have been changes on both sides.
Okay, so more on services and that type of thing?
Yeah.
This has been a really good contract and especially for our city of Sturgis residents. I mean, it saves the county money, which saves our s- city residents, their county tax dollars and it brings money in uh to our ambulance service. So it's a, it's a sword that cuts both ways for our city residents.
Any other discussion on the agreement with Mead County? Is there a motion?
Is, any discussion from the, from the audience first of all? Before I vote? I, I can't believe that the public hasn't made any comments on this contract. Anyway.
You passed your time, Deb.
So, the initial, the initial concern that you had, Daniel, was that it was um causing the city to have to beef up its department because um the ambulance crew, because they were being called to the jail at inopportune moments. Has that dissipated? Has that gone away?
Yes, um, there are far fewer calls now that our ambulance staff is responding to at the jail. Um, and what really was occurring before um last year is that uh there would be a lot of inmates who would make requests, um sometimes two, three, four times a day that our staff would be going there. Uh, since that time, I think there have been new protocols that have been instituted. And so I'm not going to say that that never occurs, but also um given the population that the um sheriff's office is serving, I think this is probably as good of a relationship as what you can get, so.
So was there maybe an ultimatum that said things need to change or we're not coming back?
I don't know if the city would ever give the county an ultimatum. Um, I, I think there was just a lot of frank discussion between both entities about how we can improve it. Um, because without that, honestly, it became too much of a burden for our ambulance service to continue. And um they've been, um, they've been trying to make improvements and there have definitely been significant improvements that have been made. So at this point, we do feel comfortable and recommending to the council that they approve it. You know, that, we could not say that a year ago at this time.
Mm-hmm, so is the city gonna do more than break even on this? Is the city gonna make some money or?
We, we've never done a, a full cost analysis to track every single time someone has gone to the jail and back and forth. Um, but given the changes that have been made, the reduced number of times that we're responding to the jail, um and also the times now that we're able to respond. Um, the requirement for us to call people in on overtime has been greatly diminished.
Okay.
So we do feel pretty comfortable that we're not going to be losing money doing this contract, so we'd probably make some money.
Okay. Very good.
Picture as far as county residents, like Kevin said, is, you know, as taxpayers of both Mead County and the city of Sturgis for our residents, it, it, it's an impact for sure, where there isn't the need to have a full-time jail nurse is what, I mean, you know, a nurse that's at the correction.
Yeah, they realized how much that was going to cost and, and what a costly prospect that would have been for the county, but I just know that it was a burden on the city too to, to have to fulfill that contract, so, thank you.
Yeah.
What is the duration, the terms of duration on the contract?
This year and next.
Next, yep.
Through, through twenty twenty-two, end of twenty twenty-two. With a significant increase for next year.
Well, and the reason why there's a.
Correct, yeah, because of the time.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Move to approve B on the consent calendar.
We have a first by Jason to approve B. We have a second by Kevin. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously. Item nine is approval of the claims. Any questions from council on the claims as presented? No additions tonight, appreciate that. Public or council discussions on claims.
I have, I had a couple, let me, I had a couple of questions. Let me get there. I didn't do good diligence this time and print them off. I got the one on border states answered before. Just like everybody to know the, maybe we have somebody detail. Just like everybody to know the, maybe we have somebody detail the wastewater contract expenses. We have the advanced engineering and environmental PKG contracting. That contract is combined, almost a $200,000 contract. If nobody's interested, I guess I'm not.
More than that.
The 18th. Yeah.
Yeah, it's just.
That's for the wastewater treatment plant, but total is?
16th.
I think the question that I had is, how come that much now? And I couldn't answer the fact that what is old left on it?
Well, they're still doing work to finalize.
There's like a million dollars that's held back and it's a percentage that we can't pay.
Toast done.
Yep. So the vast majority of the construction's completed. They're doing startup operations now. And so there's still some work that's still being done that we're making payments on. And then once it's actually at completion, then we're going to have a very large payment still because there's the retention that we continue to keep to ensure that the project's completed, similar to any other construction project.
On page 10, we have an expense of $23,285.62 for fence. And I guess I'd like to make a comment. I bring that up publicly so I can say thank you to Rick and his crew for designing and getting that fence completed and put in. It's the new fence on the soccer field in the S-curves. It should have been something that we did 20 years ago with the balls, soccer balls and baseballs and everything else coming, flying across Lizelle. But anyway, thank your crew for me and the council, Rick. And I think that's all the comments I had. Anyway, thank you.
Any other discussion or is there a motion?
So moved.
First by Dean.
Second.
Second by Mike. All those in favor of the claims, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no? That motion carries unanimously. Item 10 is report subset A is Resolution 2021-45. This is an amendment to TIF 18. Go ahead, Dave.
I would move that we table this until the next meeting, please.
First by Dave to table. There's a second by Becca with a table. There's no further discussion if the motion passes. All those in favor to table, please indicate by stating yes.
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 Opposed to no? The motion to table passes, I do believe that next meeting, so it'd be the 18th of October, we will readdress that amendment. Subset B under reports is the consideration to purchase a new garbage truck. Mr. Bush has got a staff report. It's quite a machine, it looks like, on paper.
That it is. Evening, Mayor, members of the council. Up for consideration tonight is the purchase of a Heil Durapack Rapid Rail Automated Side Loader Garbage Truck mounted on a Peterbilt 520 chassis. This is similar to what we currently have in our fleet. We purchase these, we've been purchasing, making these large equipment purchases off of the, using the Sourcewell contract, which is a cooperative purchasing agreement formerly known as the National Joint Powers Association. City of Sturgis is a member of that. What that enables us to do over a traditional bid process is not only do we get the discount from our local vendor, in this case being Northern Truck, but we also see anywhere from a 10 to sometimes 15% discount from the manufacturer as well. So that's a discount from Heil and that's a discount from Peterbilt or whatever manufacturer we do when we buy this. We leverage the power of the municipalities. There's over 500,000 municipalities that are a member of Sourcewell. We leverage that power and we get that discount from the manufacturer as well as our local vendor. When we, traditionally, when we go to bid, all we get is the local vendor discount. So we do see considerable savings in buying this. Also, what it enables us to do is to buy like pieces of equipment. So we don't necessarily have to go to the lowest bid and get, for example, like our Dressdodoser from Poland at the landfill. We're able to.
Don't bring that up.
We're able to buy the same fleet and maintain a fleet which has the same operation. We use the same fluids, the same filters. There's a lot of benefits to that. The downside of this this year, it was about five years ago, we purchased our last one and we've seen about a 6-point, I think it's 6 and 1/4% increase in the prices, which is fairly hefty. We would like to have not seen that, but at the end of the day, it is what it is and we desperately need a new garbage truck. Typically, what we see happening with our garbage trucks is the packer bodies wear out long before the chassis. That's why we've converted all of our older pieces of equipment into dump trucks and various things is because the chassis, you know, usually has a lot of life left in it, but it's that packer body that doesn't. We run our garbage trucks, go to Balfour, probably two or three times a day. So it's a lot of moving parts and when they're compacting and they just wear out. So what is up for consideration tonight is the purchase of that truck from Northern Truck Equipment in the amount of $326,669.90. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions for Rick? Daniel, you reaching for something there now?
Yeah, I think just to reemphasize what the public director or public works director brought up is that the annualized increase of just the trucks is over 6% a year. That as well as Balfour increasing our cost by 5% a year. Those are the sorts of costs that we don't have control over, unfortunately. And so as those costs continue to exceed, you know, our 3% a year increase, that's how we start to get into the point that we start having deficits in our sanitation fund. So that really is why we had to make an increase earlier this year was to make up some of those differences because over time, those sorts of deficits start to creep up and cause issues.
Any other discussion or questions for Rick on this consideration?
I move to approve.
First by Dave to approve the purchase of the new garbage truck.
Second.
There's a second by Mike and a third by Dean. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no?
Comment. One is not enough.
Thank you, Mayor.
Fuck is not enough.
Keep saving. Item 11 is other matters that come before the council. Council have anything to add, not on the agenda tonight? How about public? Come on up, Bernie. The TIF?
A under reports.
Yep.
Of the amendment?
Yep.
Okay. Why was this not taken care of tonight?
Well, the most clear answer is to make sure that we have all of our legal descriptions and our resolution correct. We don't feel there's any change in anything as far as the base or anything like that, but we just want to make sure we have our document correct is why we table that until the next meeting.
Anything else on other matters before the council? Go ahead.
I should have brought this up during announcements, but I'm in Love Inc., part of the Love Inc. group here in Sturgis. And on October 14th, we're bringing in a speaker who's going to talk about what it would take to help Sturgis become a dementia-friendly community. And one of the concerns that we have seen are people who have moved away just because they need to be near family when loved ones, you know, are stricken with Alzheimer's or something like that. So we have a person who's coming in from Sheridan, Wyoming, which is a dementia-friendly community. And she's going to speak at 6 o'clock on the 14th, that's Thursday. And the event is at the Sturgis United Methodist Church. And we'd really like to get as many supporters out to listen to her as possible. And what she does is she's a dementia educator who helps people develop, you know, areas where people can be supportive to the family and the community can come together and support these people. And as our population ages, it's really going to be critical that we're all there to support our friends and neighbors. So I just wanted to invite you all to that event.
What time is that meeting, Deb?
There's dinner at 5:30 and then the speaker starts at 6:00. But again, it's at the Sturgis United Methodist Church and I would just encourage everybody to come out and be a supporter of this good program. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Anything else? I believe we covered everything in exec. So last item is a motion for adjournment if someone so choose to do so. We have a first by Becca to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Dean, third by Angela. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no? We're adjourned. Thanks, Aaron, for calling in the middle of your night and being apart. Appreciate it.